Welcome to the September meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. We'll start our meeting with our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is Roll Call and Recognition of Visitors.
Hey, this evening we have seven visitors. Dick Carter, Cynthia Stevens, Marvin Franks, Susan Norwood, Kathy Davis, Ellen Wilson, and Roberta Everslaj.
Welcome. Thank you for coming. I know some of you are here for particular parts of the agenda, and I will make sure you know upfront that once your part of the agenda is done, you will not hurt our feelings if you have other things to do tonight. You may move on. The next item is the Open Forum. The Open Forum is a section of our agenda where members of the public have the opportunity to provide comments to the board. There will be one Open Forum period for each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people intend to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door at each board meeting prior to the Open Forum agenda item. When addressing the board, registered speakers should be respectful and civil and should not address matters related to individual personnel matters at the college. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel issues or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes or otherwise a subject of board review. Tonight, we have one speaker registered, and I've already told Mr. Franks he's welcome to come back anytime because I understand he has a presentation. Marvin Franks with the Lennox Office of United Parcel Service, UPS. And please come to the podium. And if you have any remarks, please share those with us, and then I think Dr. Sobchak will be willing to meet you there.
Thank you, and good evening. Again, my name is Marvin Franks. I'm the area HR manager for UPS. We do have two UPSers with us. I have Kathy Davis. Kathy is our Talent Development Manager for our region. And I have Susan Norwood. Susan is a Operations Division Manager responsible for all of Western Kansas. I can guarantee you, I won't take more than five minutes this go around. But I want to thank the board and Dr. Sobchak for allowing us to come in this evening. Four months ago, I want to touch on briefly what's happened since four months ago. We visited and participated in campus crazes where I had the opportunity to see some of you there, and had the opportunity to really touch a lot of your students and share the UPS story with them and the opportunities that we have there. We're working still with Mike Wesus here and his group and Keith Krieger on a curriculum for our part-time management people that will be beneficial, that will allow them to grow and continue their education here at Johnson County Community College and beyond. High schools, we are really engaging the high schools in the Kansas City, Missouri and Kansas City, Kansas area, and we're sharing the UPS Johnson County Community College story with the principals, the placement people, sharing with them that we have a great opportunity and what we've done with Johnson County Community College, we're looking to do with our high schools also, to engage in the educational process and make sure that as an organization, as a company, we have a or play a vital role in supporting their education initiatives. Again, we continue to work with various aspects of the college. We got a meeting in a couple of weeks with Mike and his group, and we're just looking to make sure as an organization, we say we want an educated workforce. In order to have an educated workforce, we can't just knock at your door and say we want your students to work for us. We have to knock at the door and come to the campus and be involved in different things that go on in the campus, help the professors teach, share from an outside perspective what goes on in corporate America. And I think since UPS is a multi-billion dollar organization, since we have a very diverse curriculum as far as job opportunities, career opportunities, in various fields, I think that makes us a good catalyst to make sure that happens. So what we'd like to do tonight, and I'm going to ask Susan and Kathy to come up, we want to present the third installment of a grant to Johnson County Community College from the UPS Foundation in the amount of $10,000 to the campus. And what this means is in the last nearly little less than two years, we've given over $30,000 to the college.
Before I come over and get the chat, you can stand there because that's really nice. You're standing there like that. We'd like to thank Mr. Franks and all the UPS group for working so closely with us. We're all here in the same, you know, in the same challenge, and that's trying to give our students the best opportunities for success. And to be able to succeed at a corporation like UPS is a great, great opportunity for them. So thank you very much, not just for your so many different ways that you partner with us, but also for your financial support. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marvin.
Thank you. Thank you, Marvin, Kathy, and Susan for what you do for us and what you do in the community. I think maybe, Dr. Sobchak, if we could just get our bumper stickers on every one of those brown trucks all over town, that would be great advertising for us. Thank you very much for that and the support. Our students will benefit from that greatly. We very much appreciate it. Next item is Awards and Recognition. I know we have one for Steve Wilson. Andy?
Thank you very much. Steve Wilson, if you'd come to the podium here. It gives me great honor to announce that Steve Wilson, Professor of Mathematics and past Assistant Chair of the Mathematics Department, was awarded the Johnson County Community College Faculty Association Leadership Award for recognition for his outstanding leadership and service to the Mathematics Department, faculty, the college, the community, and professional involvement for the betterment of teaching and learning in community colleges across the country. Steve actually received or was given this recognition at the All Faculty Meeting by the Faculty Association, and it's real important to give some recognition. I'd like to sort of insert here as well that this is initiated by the Faculty Association. So it shows the whole faculty's involvement and the spatially exceptional spatial work that Steve has done. I'd like to note just a few of the highlights. Steve has been a recipient of the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Faculty Achievement Award in 2006 and 2015. He didn't just work real hard one year. This is an amazing career that Steve brings to the college. He's the President, Kansas Mathematical Association of Two-Year Colleges. He's a recipient of the Innovation of the Year Award from the League for Innovation in Community Colleges in 2005. He's awarded for Excellence in Innovation with the Use of Technology in College Mathematics, recipient of Excellence Award at the National Institution for Staff and Organizational Development. These are all national recognitions. Steve has just been just an incredible contributor to the full life of the college in every way imagined, and there's it's hard to imagine anyone more deserving. So Steve, we really thank you for your work to the college and are pleased to, on behalf of the Faculty Association and the college as well, to give you this recognition.
Thank you. I do, members of the board and Dr. Sobchak and faculty and staff, I do want to say thank you for hiring me 24 years ago and giving me the opportunity to pursue my teaching career here at JCCC. It's been a really fascinating time and looking for that vision of quality. We it certainly was something we looked for 24 years ago. I know we still have that vision, but the number of opportunities that have come my way and the encouragement of peers has really, you know, led me to this position. And I can't help but think that as you, faculty, staff, and board members also encourage one another, you can possibly bring out even greater successes in the future. Thank you for recognition.
Steve, what's impressive, I think, to all of us is that you've got a lot of awards. This is an award from your peers that you work with and that know you best and that see you every day, and they recognize your outstanding service to this college and to the students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter?
Well, this evening I have a fairly brief report to present to you, but there are a few important things to make note of. We are now two months into the state's new fiscal year, and the first two months have both shown downward trends in revenues that were expected. I think it's worth noting that, and I made a comment about this in last month's report, that the Department of Revenue will now begin presenting the month-end budget figures or financial figures at the first of the month. They do that so that they can capture some of the fee funds, non-tax revenue funds, interest in bank accounts, and apply that towards the total picture. I think the thing to keep in mind is that many of those dollars cannot be used on state general fund expenditures or for things in the state budget, but it's one way to at least keep track of budget numbers. The number for August that was down was $25.7 million below expectations of revenue. The adjusted number is $6.39 million below expected revenues. So I think you can see how that method plays into reporting the numbers at the beginning of the month moving forward, and that's their intent. Having said all of that, we're now at the point where state agencies and different organizations that are part of the state budgeting process submit their annual budget requests, and those were due earlier this week. The Board of Regents submitted a budget increase of about $28.8 million or so, of which about 10.5 would make it to institutions that deal with career and technical education components. So those would be increases over prior year's budget requests, and that period now starts the those numbers, however, go to the Governor's Budget Office when they begin assembling their budget, and we'll know a little bit more. I think there's a budget appeal process that occurs a little bit later in November, but we won't know what the actual Governor's recommendations are until the State of the State in January. Today, in the State House, the Legislative Budget Committee is reviewing four proposals for an efficiency study. I'll let you read about that in my report, but that's been an interesting process to follow as it sort of came about at the end of the legislative session earlier this year. They intend to go into executive session, the committee intends to go into executive session tomorrow morning to finalize what I believe will be an offer or proposal for one of those four committees that has submitted a proposal to help the state find efficiencies and fine dollars for the state budget process. Just by way of updates from some other interim committee matters, the Confirmation Oversight Committee did in fact confirm the three regions that were nominated by the Governor's Office. They're listed there. That report will be forwarded to the full Senate in January, at which time full Senate confirmation is or full Senate approval is required in January or whenever they get around to it. A couple of other committees to make note of, and I've listed the local committee members that make up part of the committee selection on these committees, is Education and Tax. The Education Committee will be reviewing yet another new education funding formula for K-12 schools. The two-year funding formula, the block grant funding formula that we're currently under will expire at the end of the next fiscal year, and so there'll be plenty of conversation about that, not only this fall as the initial preparations begin, but throughout the session next year. The other one that I think we'll be paying very close attention to is the Tax Committee. One of the things that they'll be looking at this fall are the various charitable and industry type of exemptions in the tax code, as well as they'll be taking a look at the tax lid matters that they passed last session, and that we anticipate that that will come back in a fairly significant way for next year's session. Finally, there is a committee that is broader or more broad in scope than just legislative. The Kansas Judicial Council convenes semi-annually a Kansas Open Records Review Committee. Our own Senator Baumgartner chaired that committee this year, and they will be making recommendations to the full legislature on ways to improve the Kansas Open Records Act statutes. In particular, they were looking at matters that maybe weren't considered prior to the electronic age and social media, and so I think we'll see some tweaks and adjustments when that final report comes out. So, Mr. Chairman, that would conclude my report, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Questions, Mr. Carter? Do we was there any discussion in the last session when the property tax lid was placed on local governments or the spending lid was placed on local government, not including community colleges? Was there discussion about including community colleges, or is that likely to be the next step, or the legislature tells us what we can or can't spend money on?
I think that's always the concern. When one local unit, one group of local units of government are included, the excuse may be, "We meant to include you." In this case, that was not the case. We were not included in that discussion, but I think that's always the concern. Who's next?
Thank you very much. Okay, we're ready for committee reports. First committee report is the Audit Committee. Trustee Sharp?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was no Audit Committee meeting this month, so I do not have the report.
Collegial Steering Committee is my report, and Ms. Trustee Sharp was there. We had our first Collegial Steering Committee meeting on Tuesday. It includes two representatives from Faculty Senate, two representatives from the Faculty Association, two representatives from Ed Affairs Committee, Educational Affairs Committee, and I think we had four representatives from the administration, as well as Chair and Vice Chair of this board. This is a group we get together once a month to talk about really almost anything that goes on on campus that where we think communication will be beneficial, and we can, you know, head off problems before they occur, try to help fix things that are going on, make sure that any miscommunication is taken care of. This first meeting for the year, we spent most of the time just getting to know each other and everybody kind of going through their biography, which was very interesting. I'll tell you some of the things we learned about our membership. Several have taught at the high school and the college levels. At least seven people who were there are natives of states other than Kansas. We have a beekeeper, a dulcimer player, two former presidents of college student bodies, an owner of goats and chickens, and a couple of first-time college graduates in their family. So a diverse group from all over the country, all of whom ended up here at Johnson County Community College in leadership positions trying to make this place better. The one thing we have in common, I think, is a real energy to make this college better and continue the momentum toward a transparent, accountable, and inspired learning community. Anything to add?
I have nothing further to add to that.
Thank you. Nervous about that, but all right. Human Resources, Dr. Drummond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did not meet this month, therefore we have no report.
Learning Quality, Mr. Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Learning Quality Committee met on September 8th, 2015, in this room at 8:00 a.m. Trustee Nancy Ingram and I were present along with Mr. Anderson and Dr. Sobchak. We met and had several presentations that day, including one from Clarissa Craig on the affiliation, cooperation, articulation, and reverse transfer agreements. The agreement discussed that day was specific to the Dwayne Peaslee Technical Training Center Faculty Use Agreement. Clarissa said that JCCC worked with the Lawrence Chamber of Commerce and the Lawrence School Districts in early planning sessions for developing programs to be offered at the new Lawrence Peaslee. And am I saying that correctly?
Peaslee, that's correct.
Thank you. Center and the Lawrence College and Career Center. The Flint Hills Community College and the Osho County Community College will also offer courses at these centers. Each semester, the college, our college, must provide the University of Kansas a list of courses in an official request to teach these courses in Douglas County, including Baldwin, Yodora, and Lawrence, and upon approval from Sarah Rosen, KU Senior Vice Provost for Academic Affairs, the paperwork is then sent to KBOR, it's the Kansas Board of Regents, for final approval and signed authorization to complete the out-of-service area process that is required by KBOR. Courses offered in Douglas County are courses that KU does not offer. Mr. Anderson stated that the college has offered courses in Douglas County for years, and it is important to note that we have approximately 1,500 students that come from Douglas County to our campus, and it is a population we continue to reach out to and offer an affordable education. In addition to all of the colleges we have represented here, Mr. Anderson and I are both from Lawrence, and I will say my family came from that population once upon a time. The Peaslee Facility Use Agreement was reviewed on September 2nd, 2015, at the Management Committee meeting and will move forward for board approval. The agreement and recommendation will appear in the Affiliation Section of the September 17th Board Packet, which is today. The Monitoring Learning Outcomes Curriculum was presented by, it's Dennis Arjo. Is this correct? Dennis Arjo, Chair of the Educational Affairs Committee, presented curriculum modifications that include prerequisite changes to History 292 and PN 150, three ITMD course deactivations, and one new HPER 139 course. Changes will be effective for the academic year of 2016 and 17. These curriculum changes will be sent to the full board for approval, and details can be found in today's packet. Sherry Barrett also gave review accreditation and the Academic Quality Improvement Program, that's AQUIP activities. Sherry is the Director of the Outcomes Assessment, provided a presentation that included, among other things, information about the Higher Learning Commission and their upcoming visit and tasks that must be completed in advance. She also discussed ongoing AQUIP projects, accreditations, assessments, et cetera, that our college's AQUIP action projects that have been completed over the past two years include program review, general education assessment plan, faculty portfolio, strategic planning, the academic and the academic master plan. JCC's AQUIP projects and detailed information regarding HLC requirements can be found at, no kidding, HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash www.hlcommission.org. And I will say, Ms. Barrett also, I could ask Dr. Sobchak, also talked about a number of things that included changes in how a college is structured, perhaps even how it's financed, could affect accreditation, and I thought that was interesting, given our current situation or specific situations as may arise. Also, Randy Weber made a presentation on the review and update of student policies as needed. Randy is the Vice President of Student Success and Engagement. He shared that the Honors Policy 314.05 has not changed, but merely has been awarded to make it more clear that the honor roll designations will only be awarded in the spring and fall semesters, as has historically been the case at the college. Vice President Weber also discussed the possibility of expanding into Missouri for certain zip codes and perhaps having a metro rate, which I found interesting, and I expressed my support that day for that particular policy. It's not on the Board Packet here, but I wanted to take the privilege to discuss it and raise the issue. I'll ask Trustee Ingram if she has anything to add.
No, not if it's done.
Okay, so then the Learning Quality Committee has reviewed the recommendations and updates to the Honors Policy and the proposed updates to clarify that the honor roll, dean's list, and president's list designations will only be awarded in the spring and fall semesters. Additional clarification has been regarding the credit our eligibility standards, and it is the recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees accept. The recommendation of the college administration to approve proposed amendments to the Honors Policy as shown subsequently in the Board Packet, and you can find that on, I believe, page five of the Board Packet. And, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
You make that motion?
I assume so.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee with respect to the Honors Policy. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Passes unanimously.
I thank you.
Trustee Ingram, do you have something you wanted to add?
I did, I did. Thank you very much, Trustee Muswell. There were just a couple of examples this past month that I had been a part of a meeting that included some work that's going on in our Alathas School District, and many of you may or may not know that we will be building a fifth high school to open. And in a community meeting, it was mentioned that public safety and green energy were going to be the two topics of our 21st century programming. So I wanted to use that as an example of being able to contact our administration and make a connection and make sure that we had been a part of those conversations. The response back to me was immediate, and yes, we were well involved in those conversations. And I just think that's a nice piece of collaboration to be able to pass on to others who may not be aware of that. Also, there is a meeting that's going to take place mid-October. We are going to be reviewing, in the Alathas School District, the 21st century programming, and once again, when made mention of that, I was quick to make sure that we had been included in that, and we certainly have. So those things that we would expect and assume from collaboration are in fact in place, and I appreciate our administration and those of you who may be serving in various ways throughout our district in Alathas, so thank you.
Thank you. We expect you to be our strong liaison to the K-12 system in Alathas.
Dr. Drummond and I are right there.
I know.
Thank you all.
All right. Next item is the Management Committee Agenda. Trustee Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Management Committee did meet on Wednesday, September 2nd, at 8:00, and as always, we have a full two-hour meeting. The information related to the management meeting begins on page seven, runs through page 16 of your Board Packet. One note on page seven, the minute's incorrectly referred to the meeting date as August 5th. Pages seven through 16 represent the proceedings of the September meeting, so we just have a clarification on those date corrections there. You'll recall that at our August 13th meeting, we adopted a resolution to extend the sale of $9.8 million in general obligation capital bonds for all of the work that we in that phase of our of our ongoing infrastructure work. And the next step, then, is to adopt a resolution to extend our current half-cent mill levy for a new five-year period that would be aligned with the length of the bonds. We talked about that also in August. We are not advocating increasing the levy. It's a matter of changing the dates and extending that half-mill levy for capital outlay to, as I said, to align with that $9.8 million bond issue. So it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to adopt a resolution authorizing that the current capital outlay tax levy of one-half mil shall be renewed for a period of five years, commencing with taxes to be levied beginning on and after June 30th, 2016, and for a five-year period, and I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to extend the one-half mil capital outlay tax for a period of five years, as stated in the motion. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to, again, for the benefit of the listening audience, this is our existing half-cent mil levy that we renew for a five-year period. We're simply changing the date to align with these bonds for this bond sale.
Any other questions? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item of business is the renewal of the RFP services of a government officer's liaison. Again, you'll recall that in September of 2013, we approved the establishment of an annual contract with our Government Affairs Liaison for a period of four years with one year increments for renewal. And this period that we're bringing to you tonight is the renewal period of October 1st, 2015, through September 30, 2016, and represents the second of a four-year annual renewal options that we have with the Carter Group. So it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the renewal of the annual contract for Government Affairs Liaison Services with the Carter Group, Inc., at an amount not to exceed $78,827.28 plus expenses pursuant to college travel policies, and I'll make that motion. Second.
Been moved and seconded to continue the contract with the Carter Group for our Government Affairs expenses. Is there are there any questions or any discussion? Are there any questions or any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Beyond those two recommendations, the committee had a very full agenda. We had three fine presentations. Melinda Bryan Smith, Director of the College's Small Business Development Center, gave an excellent presentation on the work that the SBDC is doing here at the college. As you know, the center is funded through the Federal Small Business Administration, the Kansas Department of Commerce, and our college. Last year, it served nearly 1,000 clients, assisting aspiring and existing small business owners. I think it's helpful for the Board to know that the SBDC is really running at a maximum right now. We have a very aggressive staff, meeting the needs of clients, but we're, we're getting to the point where maybe some clients, while they're all being served, may be put on a little bit of a waiting list. I share that with you because this is a very successful program, and the staff is, is really operating at a, at a maximum effort. And again, all of the evaluations we receive from clients is very, very positive, but I think we should, we should watch that particular program for, for potential expansion if our success continues to grow. And I just want to commend Melinda and the staff for the great work they're doing. It was an excellent report. Second report was by Kate Allen and Emily Bierman, presented information on the refurbishment needs at the Carlson Center. I would remind the Board that we've had a couple of retreats where we have visited about our infrastructure. At our most recent Board Retreat, Dr. Sopchak presented us with, now that we've made it through the first 50 years, what do the next 50 years look like? And we have been presented with a series of activities that will take place. The first, of course, was the $9.8 million for basically the HVAC and all of that that we have discussed previously. This piece deals with the Carlson Center, and we had a very lengthy discussion about that project. We vetted the issues very, very well. The staff is working diligently on finalizing the costs for all components of the Carlson Center, and that will also, by the way, be an item of discussion at our Board Retreat on October 3rd, so hopefully all of you can be there to hear that discussion. We expect to have beyond that a more detailed report at our October Management Meeting, and I think our schedule will still allow that we'll have time to think about that and work out the details, but we will ask this Board to take action perhaps on that at our November Board Meeting. And that, that deals with, like I say, renovation of the Carlson Center and the different theaters and so on within the whole Carlson Center. The Foundation is a partner with this. The Foundation, you'll recall, has already received, I believe it's about $300,000 or so for the sound system at the Polsky. That's part of this, this whole process. The Foundation is committed to helping us assist with this project, and our plans at this time, we kind of, we're waiting to see how the year end came out, and we'll be presenting the Board with a decision to use some reserve funds to help move this, this 25th year renovation project at the Carlson Center forward as part of our overall, the next 50 years. So I want you to be looking at that seriously and thinking about that. We believe it's time to move that forward, but we'll have the detail, again, like I say, more detail at the October 3rd Meeting and also at our October Management Meeting, but look for more to be decided on in November. Third presentation was made by Dr. Larson. Dr. Weber discussed tuition pricing, a very detailed analysis of where our tuition has been, where tuition's going, some of the tuition strategies in place in the metropolitan area, and how we, how we work with colleges throughout the region. So we, we talked a lot about Johnson County in district, in-state Kansas, and then out of the area, out-of-state altogether. Dr. Weber reviewed options for a fourth tier, a metro rate that would be available to Missouri residents in bordering zip codes. Student population has grown from 2% of our student enrollment in 2008 to over 3% in 2014. College staff see the potential for increased enrollment by offering a rate that is lower than the current out-of-state rate to these Missouri residents. This was a discussion only, but again, we'll be looking at tuition closely. Dr. Sopchak may be visiting about where we are with enrollments in his report later in this meeting, but I, I will say to you that nationally, and as a result of our meeting at KACC, enrollment seems to be, continues to be, now it seems to be, continues to be an item of very deep concern about how we, how we deal with enrollments inclining or declining. But, Dr. Weber, thank you very much. That was an excellent report, and Dr. Larson. In other committee work, information was presented about a number of agreements, which can be found in the consent agenda on page 39 of the Board Packet. There's a whole list of items, and I will not go through them in detail, and that's certainly not to demean the important work and the reporting that all of our staff does, but I think you can, you can read those for yourself. I would point out that Rachel Leers gave a budget monthly update, which, which we look at each month, which included a report of our anticipated year-end position for fiscal year 2014-15. Auditors have recently begun their work of the fiscal year 14-15 financial statements, and the legal budget forms for fiscal year, fiscal year 215-16 were filed with the county and state on August 21st. She also stated that a proposed budget calendar for fiscal year 16-17 is being developed. Mitch Borchers presented the sole source report, as well as the summary bids between $25,000 and $100,000, which are found in your packet on page 12. Rex Hayes provided a monthly update on capital infrastructure projects, and his report can be found on page 16 of your packet. With that, I would defer to Trustee Cross. Trustee Cross and Trustee Lindstrom are both in attendance, if they have any additional remarks.
No, I think I need to correct myself. It was at this Management Meeting we discussed the Missouri tuition. I apologize. But I think it was an excellent presentation, and I think one that we have to seriously look at. Excellent report, Trustee Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Any other questions of the members of the Management Committee? All right, thank you. We'll move on to the Treasurer's Report. In lieu of Mr. Lindstrom's report as our Treasurer, I will give a brief report. You probably noted that we have a little different format for the Treasurer's Report this month, which will be a new format going forward. I'm looking at Rachel. She's not looking at me, but she will. But if there are questions, we're going to go over this at our retreat on October 3rd and kind of go over the Treasurer's Report. What is reported, kind of a primer on what we should all be looking for, what, what, what she looks for, what Dr. Larson looks for, what the President looks for in our finances. We obviously have audits every year and everything else, and lots of controls in place, but, so that will be a topic on our Saturday morning event. The Packet includes the Treasurer's Report for the month ended July 31st, 2015. Page one of the Treasurer's Report is a general and PTE fund summary. As of July 31, only one month of the new fiscal year has expired. State grant payments of $11.1 million were received during August, will be reflected in next month's report. The college's book balance of cash and investments in all funds was $93.8 million. The college's unencumbered cash balance at the end of July was $73.9 million, which was about $10.9 million higher than, than at the same time last year. And I think most importantly, for a monthly basis, is expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. I'll ask if there's any questions, and ask also that they be directed to Rachel or Dr. Larson, but are there any questions about the Treasurer's Report? If not, it's the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month of July 31, 2015, subject to audit, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries unanimously. We're to the monthly report of the President.
Thank you, Trustee Musul. First, tonight, there will be no lightning round. I'm sorry to report.
Good or bad for us?
I think that's probably this evening. It's good for you because at the end of this report, I will defer to Dr. Corb, and she will give an update of our strategic planning process. But before we get there, just a few things. Trustee Cook talked about enrollment, and I'm very pleased to report, and he talked about the national trends and statewide trends as far as enrollment declines in higher ed institutions, much of that being driven by an improved economy, which, in other words, people do not need training, they do not need to go back to school, they're going to work. And so, as, and on our, at our school, we were down about versus a year ago, 1.7% with regard to head count, and about 2.1% with regard to credit hours. And so we, that reflects a lot of hard work from everybody throughout the campus, and especially those in Student Services, who are out there really beating the drums and doing whatever they could to make enrollment happen. Here are a couple of things, we look at the numbers, though, that are fascinating. First of all, our Hispanic student enrollment is up 9.7%. This is reflective of the county, as well as the possibilities of a good demographic for us to really, to really focus on in the future. High school student enrollment, that's concurrent, things like College Now, that is up 10%. Keep in mind, the legislature released the limitations on that, and you're going to see that to continue to grow in semesters ahead. And with regard to our on-campus, main campus, while we had an increase in online credit hours by 5.9%, so now we have more students taking online courses, conversely, on-campus credit hours were down 5.3%. So you almost have an inverse relationship between growth in online and on-campus, and that is reflective of national trends as well. So this is great data. This information gets circulated to faculty, members of staff, I think the trustees are on the circulation list, aren't you? No? Okay. Well, if, if you're interested, we can do that, because it's a great...
Last meeting, too.
I said last meeting. But this is a great report, and it's very, very thorough with regards to all the different, different groups. So we're very fortunate to have that team. Just a few more things before we turn over to Judy. First of all, Trustee Ingram mentioned our collaborative efforts with what's going on in Alathas. That is representative of one small part of the county. It's really amazing to me, when you meet with people throughout Johnson County, the role that this college has in working with different groups, be they in school, in social service, what have you. It seems like our people are always there, and that demonstrates, that contributes to the fact that we have that high county approval rating, but also the commitment that everyone here has to make our community better. So thank you, Trustee Ingram, for bringing that up. There's a great story in the newspaper yesterday with regard to innovations with a chem lab flavor. It was in the food, the food section. And there's just a couple excerpts here. This story focused on Aaron Prater. He's an associate chef, professor in our Hospitality and Culinary Program, and it talked about some of the techniques that he's utilizing, that he's sharing with our students. And it specifically mentions such kitchen devices as the rotary evaporator, the sonic dismembrator, and then of course, freeze dryer, and other, and other pieces of equipment that are in our innovation kitchen. But what's really great about this article are the quotes that Professor Prater gave. And this is, this one, he says, "This new approach to cooking isn't taught in most schools, so I want to teach it here." That's the type of innovation and edge we need versus other schools out there, that this is the one place where you can come and get that type of, that type of instruction. Aaron grew up in New Orleans, and I read a little bit about his background. Why wouldn't you want to come here and take a class from, from this professor? Aaron grew up in New Orleans, was firmly rooted in the city's food culture. He developed the habit of exploring local markets while serving two tours with the United States Marine Corps as a journalist and as a public relations specialist. Then he moved to wine sales in Kansas City, and in that process, he fell in love with the kitchen. He went to culinary school, he cooked in a number of restaurants, and traveled throughout Europe and Asia before returning to Kansas City, where he began teaching here at our college. And he talks about himself, he describes himself as a peasant food kind of guy. And for those of you who have had meals over there, you, you know that it is a bit beyond peasant food. He talks about, "This experience fueled my desire to bring some of that knowledge here so our students aren't getting out into the world without knowing what this is." How fortunate we are to have faculty that care that much and that are that interested in providing the state-of-the-art instruction and equipment to our students. So I thought that was terrific. Hope you had a chance to read it. Yesterday, at the KBOR Meeting, we, I was able to co-announce with Chancellor Bernard Gray Little from the University of Kansas about a new program that we have launched together with KU. And this is something, and this is, is very innovative, and I have to say that it certainly put the Board of Regents back in their seats, because this is big news. And I'd like to credit Andy Anderson here for his perseverance in making, and working so closely with the leadership at KU, and also many people here at the college were a part of this. But this is a degree partnership program that helps students chart a path to their goals early in their academic career. They can earn both an associate's degree from our college and a bachelor's degree from KU simultaneously. Students will be fully admitted at both institutions simultaneously. Students will, will enroll in core classes at our college, and when they do so, they will be paying our tuition rates, which are considerably lower than some of the research one institutions. At the same time, they can take upper-level, program-specific courses at the University of Kansas, either in Lawrence or at Edwards. So from a student perspective, what a great opportunity. And this isn't going to be one of these very rigid, highly structured, two-plus-two programs. This is going to have a lot of flexibility. So for the past four years, KU has been sending all their deans here, meeting with our deans. We've been working together. Our IS departments have worked very closely together because this is a sharing of that information. Now you're stepping on solid, on pretty sacred ground when it comes to how institutions are with regard to their own data. And also, we're sharing advisors, so there's going to be a, I guess you could say, a simultaneous advising process. And ultimately, through all of this, I think it's fair to say both institutions had to give up a little bit. They had to give something up. But ultimately, and, and thanks to the leadership that kept on pressing and pressing, this thing came to fruition. And it could be a big deal for us, but most importantly, it's going to benefit the students throughout Johnson County who have an interest in getting associates from Johnson County Community College, as well as a bachelor's from the University of Kansas. Andy, is there anything else?
I'd just like to give special recognition to J.D. Gragg, as well, and the Articulation Coordinator, and the Student Services Department. A lot of these processes require changing the way we do business. And, and without Randy's guidance and J.D.'s participation in this, these things wouldn't, wouldn't be possible. There is also a tendency, a kind of a desire, early on, maybe to do just a little pilot project. Sarah Rosen, I want to also give some recognition to Sarah Rosen at, at the University of Kansas, and David Cook at KU Edwards, and Provost Vitter at the University of Kansas. The leadership at KU held, held to the purpose, and I did here as well, but we didn't do something small. This is, this is affecting the relationship fundamentally between the University of Kansas and Johnson County Community College, and I think the, the great winners will be the students. So we're real excited to monitor this and see how it works. There will be hiccups, we're, we're pretty confident along the way, but, but we're committed to making this work, and it'll benefit the, the students in this region.
Questions about that particular program before Dr. Sopchak moves on?
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I, I just think this is amazing, because it's a journey that's been going on for a long, long time, and to be able to finally pull it together for the benefit of a lot of students in this area is going to have a lot of payoff and positive feedback for both organizations, and a great way to help students who, in many cases, would not have an opportunity to do this. I think that's just, just great for our students, and I hope it's just the beginning of many other collegial-type relationships that we could have with KU and others that will benefit a lot of the students in our community. So congratulations, thank you for your work, and I think it's just the beginning of many more things yet to come.
Is this a precursor to similar relationships with other Regent schools?
I wouldn't expect so.
Okay. We ready for Dr. Corb?
Not yet.
Oh, not yet. Excuse me.
How many phone calls, how many phone calls did you get today from other schools?
I didn't get that email.
Just a couple.
From who? Phone calls from me?
The other schools are, I mean, this is, getting this set up, getting a model in place, got a lot of attention yesterday in, in Topeka when, when they signed that, and it actually touched very much on a, on a, a value that the legislature and the Board of Regents have in terms of promoting collaboration across the state. I might add, actually, since I'm lightning round here anyway, sort of, I'll just throw it out. Tomorrow, we'll have over, close to 300 faculty from across the state of Kansas higher ed working on the Kansas Core Outcomes Group, aligning curriculum, which is also part of what makes this activity possible. what makes this activity possible. And so the Transfer and Articulation Committee, I co-chair with Bruce McDavid at Washburn, will be convening that meeting here, but there will be, again, a, a large university and, and two-year, all the two-year and all the four-year schools will have representatives here working on 10 courses, adding those to the 56 courses that are already aligned across the state of Kansas. So this, this effort at collaboration is where the state is moving. And yesterday I think we, we made a big step in leading that, that direction, so.
All right. Dr. Corb.
You may remember, if you recall the timeline for the strategic plan, that we had built in there in September or so, we would come back and do an update on where we were in the process of the whole strategic plan. So that's what this is, is just an update to give you an idea of where we are and where we are headed. So you'll remember, these are the four goals that we have in the strategic plan that we're working on. Underneath each one of these goals are, were 13 different tasks. So we had a different task force working on 13 different projects or action steps under these goals. And those teams worked very hard over this last year. And this involved over 100 faculty and staff members who got together, they met, some met weekly, some met every other week. They put a lot of time, effort and energy into the work of their task force. They took it very seriously and they came to cabinet, just part of the process was that cabinet met every week. We went, met with a different leader from each one of these 13 teams. We got updates from what the teams were working on. We gave them feedback about where they were in their process and if they had questions for us, they had an opportunity to ask us for some direction. If we had questions for them, we had an opportunity to do that. So they cycled through and, and were continually held accountable for what their groups were doing. And so those came in weekly updates to cabinet. At the end of the year, each of these teams made a recommendation, or recommendations because they had more than one, to cabinet on what their team had come up with, what they felt like were the best recommendations for whatever task or project that they were working on. And we had about 37 of those recommendations, if I counted them right, that each of these teams came up with. Cabinet then met in June and we went through and we reviewed all of the recommendations and we tried to go through then and kind of sort and prioritize what we would do because we knew that we could not go forward with supporting 37 recommendations this next year. And so what happened as we did that, some of the projects that these teams were working on ended up as continued projects. So they are, they, the, the team, maybe that exact same team, maybe a little bit different makeup of the team, is going to continue working on that particular project. We came up with these things, which the, the first one is the high-impact practices. And they came up with the guided pathways, which is one of the high-impact practices and is really just a, a way to help students chart their way more effectively when they enter college, to give them a clear path to their goals and how they get, they accomplish what it is that they set out to do. And so we have a, a team working on that. One of our goals last year, one of the tasks that they did was the employee engagement survey. And so this year, one of the things that's continuing is just implementation of that employee engagement survey. So people are being asked to do, to put action plans together on what they're going to do to forward some of that work and the discovery that we made in the employee engagement survey. An investment in online learning. Online learning was, as you heard, it's a growing area of our enrollment. And so they are continuing to look at different options around our online learning and ways to improve the quality and potentially offer some different options there. Internal communication was another one that is continuing. There were some recommendations that came forward there just about expanding and enhancing our internal communication. We have a new marketing communications director starting tomorrow and pending board approval later. But, so we, that team is still together, but they want to be able to incorporate that individual and hopefully a CIO candidate and their recommendations for some things as we go forward. Administrative function review process, this is, we, one of the things that we worked very hard on last year was the academic program review. And that was one of the projects that, that was completed, but we're looking at a similar process for administrative functions. So a pilot project going forward this next year is to do a, a review of the payroll process. And they will, not only will they go through and review the payroll process, but they're going to document what they're doing, hoping that we can use that as a, a process that we can use for other administrative functions. Facility allocation and utilization is another ongoing and continuing project. I put an asterisk by four of those because four of those are also Aquip action projects, which you know is part of our accreditation process. And we have to have at least three active projects at any given time. And we, we do have three. We're going to institute actually a fourth one at a different time so that we don't have all of those coming due all at the same time in the future. So those are projects that are continuing to move forward, but that wasn't enough. And so we then took some of those recommendations that were made and we're actually kind of handing those back to the departments that would be responsible for them. So there are additional recommendations that, that the departments are taking and they're operationalizing those things. So the academic master plan, enrollment plan, academic advising, the program review process, it was, it was completed, the, the three-year one was completed, but now they're looking at really an annual review process, so they're, they're going a little bit deeper with that. Improving internal business processes, they had lots of recommendations. And so we didn't want to say, well, we're only going to choose one of those, but different departments can work on some of the things that were identified there and improve quality as we go through. Marketing plan and then the budgeting process, we did complete the alignment of that with assessment and planning and that kind of thing. But there's, you know, as we work through that cycle, there are things that we may be able to, to work on. And so they, they're continuing to do some of those things as we move forward. We did allocate resources when we went through and looked at this. And when they made those recommendations, each of the different areas that made the recommendations, they also asked for resources to work on some of those things. And they actually asked for $1.3 million in requested funds to help move those projects forward. We were not able to do that, but we did come up with $621,000 that we are, that we did allocate in the current budget to help move some of these projects forward. And these projects are directly related to the strategic plan, to what came out of the task force, to the recommendations that were accepted and prioritized moving forward. And now each of those groups has some resources to work with. Some of the things that we were not able to resource doesn't mean that we said no forever. We, we may be able to resource some of those things as we go along, but this was just the priority list that we were able to come up with this year. The next steps that we have then, we now have these, these new groups and, and teams that are working on things as well as the, the departments that are operationalizing some of the recommendations that came up. The teams will continue to work on these projects and will give periodic updates to cabinet. They're, they're kind of working on some of those things, so we're not really seeing weekly updates to cabinet just yet, but probably towards the end of the year, we'll start getting reports back from them so that we can make sure that they are on target with the goals that were set. At the end of the year, they will then, will follow really the same type of process where they will make recommendations. They'll report their progress, we'll see where they are, we'll see if things are completed or if things need to move on. They will make recommendations, we'll look at that overall with the priorities that we have for the institution, and then we will reset projects going forward for '16, '17. But again, all of these things are connected very directly to the strategic plan and to the implementation of strategic plan. Do you have questions?
Questions for Dr. Corb? It's, it's nice to see once again that people are following through and, and we don't, we don't see all the work that goes into this. And how, how do you, how will you measure, is it, are key performance indicators are the ultimate measure, but are you keeping track of what all is being, is being accomplished under these various efforts?
We, we are. The key performance indicators are, that goal number one is, is really key performance indicators, so that's a very clear measure. But each one of these different teams that are working on these projects, they have goals and they have, you know, you're, you're able to tell, did they need, did they do what it is that they were supposed to be doing? Some of those are ongoing, the enrollment plan, the marketing plan, some of those, there are things that you will do and you'll try and you'll implement and then you start over again. So, so some of those are really ongoing, but we try to put those measurement points in there. Those are some of the questions that they get when they come to cabinet, really is, we're making sure that, that they're not just talking about it or that, but that we actually see those specific things happen.
Trustee Cross?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Dr. Corb, I, I have a question I want to ask. I've been here about over two years, but it seems to me that this is not just make-work or fluff that we put out on television, so it sounds like we're doing something here. It's, this work is very much needed to show that we're, we're not stagnant, we don't just have people that show up to work. We're reviewing what goes on here, we're working to make it better so that we can stay accredited, that we as trustees and the legislature all know that their money's being spent well. I mean, I, I don't want to oversimplify it, but as I, I get caught up in what we're doing here, I'm like, why are we doing this? And I find myself having to boil stuff down. Is that too simple of a, a summary in my mind or?
No, that's exactly what we're doing. And, and when you look at the accountability that we have, one of the reasons that some of these things are connected to key performance indicators is because we're accountable to those performance indicators at state, national levels. We also have, you know, crosswalked this with the Aquip projects because we are accountable to HLC for those kinds of things. And we, we need to show that we're actually doing these things. And we need to be able to show we've made the progress that we say that we're making. So we believe it's, they're relevant. These are, these are the things that we think actually help our students. And we, we heard Kay McClenni spoke, who is working on, actually she's working very closely with AACC with the guided pathways project. But she spoke at KACC T and she talked about some of these very things that we have in our strategic plan. And I, I was proud of the fact that we already have a lot of things that she identified as being extremely important for students. They're in our strategic plan. Another thing that she said, and I thought, well, we, we did that, was that you need to resource the things that are in your strategic plan. You need to make sure that you're putting resources toward what is in your strategic plan, what you have set up for student success. And we, we're doing that. So I think we're doing things we're supposed to be doing.
Chairman.
Thank you. It seems to me like a very concrete example of what you're talking about, Dr. Corb, is what was reported on earlier tonight and reported yesterday.
Yes.
When the collaboration that took a long, long period of time, a lot of energy, a lot of effort to come together is a dynamic benefit of what we do when we plan like this.
Right.
And I'm not sure, nor probably is anybody sure, what some concrete examples will be in the future of this, but we do know there will be some. And we do know that there'll be several innovative ideas that'll actually go into practice that will benefit our constituents in the community as well as our students in the community. So I congratulate you for bringing this forth again to us, reminding us and, and allowing us to continue to understand what we're doing and contribute to it. So at the end of all this, we're really a pretty dynamic school. So thank you so much.
Other questions? Thank you, Dr. Corb, very much. Does that conclude the president's report?
concludes the report.
Thank you very much. We have no old business, I'm not aware of any new business, so we're ready for reports from board liaisons. And the first one is our Student Senate President, Mr. Rives. Welcome.
Well, I would like to thank you for allowing me to come speak today. It is an honor for me to be here and represent the Student Senate as well as the student body as a whole. Student Senate elections happened and ended last week, and we now have 25 of our 30 seats filled in Student Senate. We are continuing to work to fill those remaining seats, but we also feel great about having as many people as we already do to start the semester. When I joined Student Senate at the beginning of last semester, there were only about 15 people there. And I think that the growth we've seen already is a result of work put in by my fellow senators, a lot of work. There are several benefits to having so many people contributing, and one of those is that we have more people working towards our goals. We have three broad goals that the executive board has decided to work towards. And we want, we want to directly address student concerns, improve communications between students and the Student Senate to ensure that we know what those concerns are, and create and fulfill projects that improve the students' experience here at JCCC. With those goals in mind, we can begin to find specific ways to achieve them. I believe that having people in Student Senate who can both find ways to work towards our goals and also go out and put the energy into making those ideas and goals happen will make this a great year in Student Senate. We are also going to continue hosting annual events that have been successful in the past, including JCCC Gives, Trick or Treat for Kids and Photos with Santa. I appreciate you allowing me to come speak on behalf of the Student Senate and I look forward to continuing to come in to these meetings as the year progresses. So thank you very much.
Any questions? I, I would encourage you when there are Student Senate activities where you think a Board of Trustees member can contribute, like a pie-throwing contest or dunk tank or something, but please don't hesitate to, to contact us either through the president's office or directly and to, to see how we can help the Student Senate and the student body. I think most of us would be happy to do that.
I appreciate that.
That might be a good point. I, I challenged a group for Lace Up for Learning, which is the 5K run on Octo, Sunday, October 11th, if I remember right. So hopefully we'll have a lot of people there raising money for scholarships too. So, thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Faculty Association, Professor Palchek. You're just smiling because we had a math professor that got an award early and now you get to bookend it with your report, right?
Yes. Good evening and thank you Chairman Musul and the Board of Trustees and President Sopick. Some of you may remember Johnny Cash, you know, some of you, and you're probably wondering why I'm wearing all black today. No, I'm not a Johnny Cash, I can't sing and I'm not as good-looking as he is. But I'm just anticipating the defeat of the Denver Broncos by the Kansas City Chiefs. Again, I'd like to thank Steve Wilson for all that he has done and currently and doing for our college in the field of mathematics. He's well-deserved and I want to add, he had a standing ovation from his colleagues when he received that award. And as you can see, he's very modest and he is a gym that we have. And we have lots of gyms at this college in the faculty and in administration. I want to give a report to the board about, we're in the fifth week of our semester this fall. We're also in the third week of our two-week late start classes. And we're in the first week of our late, late start classes, which start four weeks late. And, and, and then, and then we also have on top of that, in another four weeks, we're going to have an eight-week start class. So we're trying to tell you that the college is trying to do all we can to help the students move on. On top of that, we have two two-by-twos. It's not two plus two, this is a two-by-two program that we're working to try to get students through our system that's tied up to the eight-week classes we have. Then we have all different structures to meet the need of the students. We have such as daylight time, you know, daytime, nighttime, evening, weekend, Saturday. All of those are face-to-face. And then of course, that means the college is always open and then you go, well, wait a minute, they're not open after 10:00 and 6:00 in the morning. Well, that's us online teachers because that's where all the students are doing their work. And I did an exact, I did an evaluation to see when my homework is being done in my online classes. And the vast majority, over 50%, are doing it between 11:00 at night and 4:00 in the morning. Judy Corb, I'd like to put you on the spot, she teaches an online course for us, and by the way, I understand it's highly sought after. Do you have that same feel when you look at your students? Because we get timestamped on when they do things.
I do, but my assignments are due at 11:30, so they mostly get them done at 11:25.
I do, but my assignments are due at 11:30, so they mostly get them done at 11:25.
Ah, see, I, mine, they do the work at that time at night. Okay. And these are all kinds of different formats, and I just wanted to go through that structure to get you an idea of how we are trying to work to meet the needs of the students, what fits their needs. We also, as you know, President Sopczak mentioned that we have record enrollment in College Now. We have record enrollment from last fall for our online courses. But the college is never closed. Now, what we're going to do, and this is another thing I'm stepping in, is we are filling all these committee responsibilities because the college is run by the staff, administration, and faculty. We have lots of work to be done. So all the ongoing committees we have, we're still, we're populating them, and there's still work to be done, but we're adding a couple new ones, because we're, we're not busy enough. And one of the new ones is, it's working smoothly, we're doing a master agreement, this is a tough one, I, I was trying to think of an acronym, but I can't come up with one. But it's a Master Agreement Planning and Steering Committee work group called Academic Space and Future Requirements with mostly faculty running there. And I want to give credit to the administration, they're saying, this is a work group, it's going to have a sunset clause, and we're looking at the plan that Joe Sopczak has, and what's the next 50 years going to look like? What is a classroom going to look like? And so we got six faculty members, we want to keep it a usable size, and we have four administrators, it's going to be co-chaired by a faculty member and an administrator, and they're going to work with an architect, if I understand right, is that right, Dr. Larson? And they're going to come up with, what is it going to look like? So I made sure two of the people on that team were our interior design programs. So I think that would be very helpful. And I think we have a well-designed group of people, I hope it's going to go well. I'm going to attend the first meeting, but as my wife says, all my taste is in my mouth. You're supposed to laugh about the black. Then, we're also working on the Higher Learning Commission is coming to town, and if I was Sherry Barrett, I would be telling you, well, it's only 18 months from now, that means in, in Higher Learning Commission time, it's tomorrow. So, we're working on that. The college has been working, we've done program reviews for over three years, we program review, we, all the departments get together and they're working very hard through the faculty and the administration, their deans and so on. We're doing ours in the math area for just, this year is just the small review, but next year we'll do the full review. So we have that. We also want to add, oh, that's just to give you an idea of what the faculty's doing. And then I have to do a pitch, if I can, while I got the screen, is we have a peacekeeping chief to share Sudan experience. He's going to be speaking tomorrow, and this is open to the public, so those who can come on campus at 12:00 noon tomorrow, it's in the, what we call the Craig Auditorium, it's in the GEB Building in 233. It's right next to the Faculty Association often, people. And it is free and open to the public, and his title of the presentation is Courage Under Fire: A Peacekeeper's Story. I understand it's going to be really enthralling and get your attention, I'd really encourage you to come and visit. You're probably thinking, you saw the book, and I had a lot to read. I will go through faster, I'll read a little bit faster. And we, the college, are moving in the right direction with awareness, honor, and teamwork between faculty, staff, and trustee. And that's the way we want it, and that's the way I think our faculty are headed. And I want to thank you, Chairman Musil, and good night, and is there any questions for me?
Thank you, Trustee Cook, or Trustee Cross, one of those trustees with a C.
I appreciate the distinction, but I, I'd like to note that Mr. Polczek, look, look at me when he said, some of you've heard of Johnny Cash, I have heard of Johnny Cash. He wrote a song or two, I've heard of him. And in one of them, he says, "I wear black for the poor and the beaten down, living in the hopeless, hungry side of town. I wear it for the prisoner who has long paid for his crime, but is there because he's a victim of his times. I wear the black for those who never read or listened to the words that Jesus said about the road to happiness through love and charity, why you think he's talking straight to you and me." And I'd like to think we're in that business, too. I appreciate all that you do, and I'm just asking, do you agree with Mr. Cash for the reasons he listed?
Yes, I do.
Is your middle name Sue?
No, my middle name is Aloysius.
Okay, probably true. Other questions for Ron? Thank you, it's a great report, love hearing about faculty, it's great for us to get a reminder that we, we have a start of classes, and then we have a start of classes, then we have a start of classes, then we start more classes, and that flexibility is how we respond to our diverse student body, many of whom have limited time and jobs and everything else, that we're trying to make it work for them. So, thank you and your colleagues for doing that.
And if I may, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I skipped a paragraph. We're, one of the committees we're supposed to be working on is, we don't make enough offer for our students, so one of the committees is, we're doing an inter-session, a winter session. So we're starting to look at it, we've already formed the committee, we're getting people on it, we're populating the committee, and it, hopefully we'll have it up and running, not this Christmas vacation or spring, between Christmas and New Year. It will probably start before the Christmas break, and we don't know what it's going to look like, so there is another avenue that we're trying, so we're not going to be closed at all. Okay? So keep the lights on, keep the heat on. And in my office, could you turn the air conditioner up a little bit, Joe? Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item is the Johnson County Educational Research Triangle, and Mr. Trustee Lindstrom indicated to me that there has not been a meeting since his last report, although he has taken it upon himself as a liaison from the college to have guided tours of the KU Cancer Center and the KU Edwards Campus, best building, and will be doing the same at the K-State Innovation Campus. So, Trustee Lindstrom has taken an active role in the Education Research Triangle and will be reporting to us at future meetings. Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In Dr. Sopczak's illness last week, Dr. Corb and I journeyed to Concordia, Kansas, where we attended the September meeting of KACC T on the campus of Cloud County Community College. It's always very helpful and insightful to see other campuses and how they're meeting the needs of students and their communities and the challenges they face. I'll give you an overview of what we did, but I really want to come back to a reference that Dr. Corb made to Kay McClenni. Friday afternoon, we, and I would ask Dr. Corb to be prepared to speak a little bit about the Council of Presidents. What happens at these meetings is the trustees get together and meet at certain times, and the Council of Presidents meet and discuss issues. And on Friday afternoon, the trustees were really engaged in a SWOT analysis of our collaborative efforts and, and trying to speak with one voice in the state of Kansas with 19 different community colleges, with some very unique needs, sometimes is a challenge. But we did that Friday afternoon, and then we also had heard a two-hour presentation from Kay McClenni, which I'll talk about in a little bit. And then Friday evening, the host college serves a very nice dinner, students usually perform, and then we have a legislative update. And we had a couple, two senators and a representative be with us that evening, and we had an update on what is anticipated, what happened in the last legislative session and what's anticipated going forward. Then Saturday morning, we have our, our business meeting. I would report that we received a clean audit for the past year, so the finances of the association are very, very strong. We're updating the website, which I think will make it very easy for residents throughout the state of Kansas to access information for the community college in which they have interest. And so that's, that's a big improvement that we've worked on. We heard a report from Butler Community College, also at each quarterly meeting, we ask a college to come forward and make a 20 to 30-minute presentation about their campus, so that we, if we're going to collaborate and communicate, it's important for us, we think, to understand a little bit more effectively what, what happens in each of those communities. But I want to come back and speak a little bit about Kay McClenni. I, I found it interesting tonight, then when Steve Wilson was recognized, you heard him say this, "We need to encourage one another." And he talked about the encouragement he's received from his peers in this campus. When Dr. Sopczak gave his president's report and referred to the good work that Andy Anderson is, is doing on articulation and agreements with our friends at four-year schools, words were used like "charting a path," and "we have to change the way we do business." When Dr. Corb gave her report on the strategic plan, I found it interesting that the enrollment plan and academic advising, as identified by the faculty, are two of the objectives that they're working on more closely. So what does that have to do with Kay McClenni? Dr. Corb referenced her, and it was my first opportunity to hear her. Let me just say that she's an independent consultant and co-CEO of MC2 Consultants. She serves as senior advisor to the American Association of Community Colleges and a senior associate for the Senator for Community College Student Engagement at the University of Texas at Austin. She was founding director of the center from 2001 through April of 2014, and she served during that period as a faculty member in the Program of Higher Education Leadership at the University of Texas. And she's, she's got a very impressive resume. I will finish talking about her by saying she was co-chair of the 21st Century Commission on the Future of Community Colleges. And in 2014, Phi Theta Kappa honored Dr. McClenni with the Alliance for Educational Excellence Award presented in recognition of the body of work undertaken to improve student success in community colleges. So she has a really big background on, on career pathways for students, and she's presented the work for her, and, and I, I just wanted to share a couple of her comments. My back is kind of sore because Dr. Corb sat behind me in the theater, and every time that Dr. McClenni made a point that aligned with our strategic plan and our key performance indicators, she kicked my chair. And as we walked out of there, we both said, you know, we feel pretty good about the efforts that we're doing on this campus. What matters most in some of her remarks? Most important factors that keep students in school persisting toward their goals. What matters most in that, in that statement? And she said, "Relationships matter most. People need to know, students, students need to know that someone cares about them." Most people don't go to counseling because they're proud of going to counseling, kind of shy of going to counseling. And yet, yet the most important service that students are saying in her work with colleges across the country is 93% of the students said the most important service is academic planning and advising. Academic planning and advising. And I know that we, we talk about this, at least when I was on the Learning Quality Committee, we talked a lot about developmental coursework. She reported that 70% nationally, nationally, 70% of students need at least one developmental course of some kind. And that could be for a variety of reasons. And so when we tie back, she asked a couple of interesting questions. Does your college require an academic plan for your students? And related to that, does your college require student orientation? Or do we make it available and those that want to come can? But the evidence is pretty clear. And oh, by the way, when we talk about losing someone like Patrick, she made the, the points more than once. Data are important. And how do you use your data for making decisions about improving the teaching and learning process? And how is that data used to help students plan their career path? Pretty interesting. She says, "We are currently working within designs that don't work effectively." So again, when I look at the strategic plan overview of September, and Mr. Polczek, when I hear your report about departments wanting to take a look at how we look at infrastructure, how we look at the delivery system, it's really fun for me to give this report and hear all of these various pieces, starting with Steve Wilson. We need to encourage one another. We need to improve our efforts to create clear academic pathways for each student. And, and so she, she ends up a little bit, and I, it was really exciting to me to hear this, the two hours seemed like 20 minutes, even though my back is pretty sore. But here's what she talked about, effective boards. Effective boards support a culture of inquiry and evidence. How do you use the data? Do you have data? To your point, Trustee Cross, in terms of feeling good about how these strategic plans kind of fit in, we're just not doing it for the fun of it. Secondly, she said, "The strategic plan with student success at the core are key performance indicators." It's about student success. Let me say that again, it's about student success. Explicit goals for student success are clearly understood by all. Monitor key student success rates and create a culture with the CEO that supports student success for career pathways. And again, for the public, I, I think when we go to KACC T and, and we talk about, as part of our evaluation of our CEO, the key performance indicators, we hold our, our president accountable for where those key performance indicators are moving. So again, I would just agree with Dr. Corb that when we hear a consultant like this, and, and we know how we're trying to tie in all the components that drive student success, degree completion, career pathway, and the great work that Andy has been doing with, with our four-year schools and with our faculty, I really, Mr. Chair, am pleased to, to report that I feel our college is in good stead, but that doesn't mean we become comfortable, there's work to do tomorrow. But this is one of the finest KACC T meetings I think I've attended, and with that, I would defer to Dr. Corb because of the president's, I had a whole nother agenda. And I know you were talking a little bit about tiered funding and non-tiered funding and all of that business, but Dr. Corb?
We did talk a little bit about those things. I, there were really three primary things that the Council of Presidents focused on. One was the funding and kind of what they're going to, some recommendations that they're trying to pull together to make going forward regarding funding, but there wasn't really anything new on that. It was, it was just kind of a continued conversation. The discussion, part of the discussion did center around what Andy alluded to earlier when he talked about collaboration. A lot of interest in how the community colleges and the universities can collaborate to create efficiencies, basically. So there were some, there was some brainstorming that went on, there, there was a survey that had already gone out, so they had already talked about some of these things. But what Andy has accomplished with KU is one of the things that they talked about, because a, a common application or an application that would facilitate, you know, enrollment in multiple institutions, those are the kinds of things that, that they discussed at that point. But then another conversation had to do with data and was kind of a follow-up to Kay McClenni's, the talk that Kay McClenni gave. And so they were talking about, how do you get that data? How do you get good data? How do you analyze it? You know, and, and just, it, it wasn't even me that said it, but we got a very good recommendation for the, the National Higher Ed Benchmark Project, which we administer from this campus, and several of the colleges participate in that. And they, the ones that participate just went on and on about how valuable it was to be a part of that, how valuable it was to be able to pull the data from it, and that that was their primary source of data that they used when they were trying to come up with their own. So that was, that was pretty cool.
Well, both my brother and my sister attended Cloud County Community College, so I know how, the strength of that institution. I'm glad you enjoyed Concordia. Are there any questions for either Dr. Cook or Dr. Corb? Okay. Dr. Cook, you have a foundation report, too. Is there anything to report?
And, and I would ask Trustee Ingram to be prepared to make some remarks as well as she attends the foundation meetings. But on September 2nd, the foundation held its annual scholarship celebration luncheon in the Rainier Center. And I would like to thank Trustee Musil, Trustee Sharp, President Brad Bergman, and past President Stuart Stein. Mr. Polczek was in attendance as well. We had a number of foundation members there and celebration of distributing scholarships to students. I believe, Dr. Sopczak, we did, did we do 100 and some that day or so that were, or this, this, at this period? I think there was 140 that received scholarships, something like that. We'll give over 1,000 for the year, I understand, million dollars of scholarship money. And everyone should have an opportunity to attend that luncheon. Trustee Musil, Trustee Sharp, and Mr. Bergman and Mr. Stein go around interviewing students about what, what scholarship they received, what it means to them, what they plan to do with, with their career, et cetera, et cetera. And they're very, very compelling stories, I was moved by each one, but I think there's one the community should hear about, they should hear about them all. But it's easy for us to become discouraged, we lose hope, we want to pout and we want to whine about things. And one young lady stood up and said, "I was born deaf. And I was, I was fortunate to have an implant," I believe she said, "at the age of 13." And so- And so, I've experienced what it means to be deaf, and now I can hear. And I thought she really spoke well for having had 13 years of deafness. And she says, "Now I can understand what the people that hear, and I've been blessed to be born deaf, and this scholarship will allow me to study audiology in more detail, because I feel I've been chosen to help bring the two cultures of deafness and hearing together for better understanding." And I just, I just, I get emotional about things, but I thought that was a very compelling story of someone who, for some of us, might think was born with a setback, and she happened to think it was a blessing. Trustee Ingram was there as well, trustees, and it's just, it's just a wonderful event. Nearly $440,000 has been raised for Some Enchanted Evening to date. That event, the gala, will be held on November 14th at the Overland Park Marriott. Most of the sponsorships are wrapping up. Individual tables and individual seats are now available. We're looking forward to honoring Dr. Mary Davidson Cohen as the Johnson Countyan of the Year, and again, a very, very nice evening where we generate much of our scholarship dollars to disperse to students. Couple calendar reminders. The foundation directors will meet on September 20th. October 11th, as Chair Musil has challenged us all and reported, is Lace Up for Learning, 5K Ren Walk. We'd encourage all of you to participate. All of the proceeds go to student scholarships. And October 20th is the foundation annual dinner on the stage of Yardley Hall. In case you have desires to be an actor or an actress, this is your opportunity to do so. Trustee Ingram, do you have any comments?
I do not. You did a very nice job with that report, but thank you for the opportunity.
Completes my report, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Cross, did you have a question?
I do have a question. Going back to the KACC report, there's a number of things that happens behind the scenes here, and in terms of the culture of support, I wanted to comment on Dr. Cook and President Sopczak's approach to me when I first came to the board, and their instruction of me about the status of the other community colleges in our system, and how it's important that we know what's going on with them. I think it's critical to know that there are many people here who work very hard, not only for this college, but frankly, I think for the entire community college movement, as our colleagues at the ACCT call it. These are broad in general, but intentionally so, and I think a lot of people do a lot of work here to support not only our school, but the community college movement in Kansas. And I just want to comment on that, and I think both Dr. Cook and President Sopczak have done that, and worked to help me understand what is going on here. And I want to thank them for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Great. Okay. We're ready for the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a portion of the agenda where we take up routine matters that have been placed before the, placed before the board. It's routine and consensus items typically considered collectively and approved in a single motion and vote. Any member of the board may request a particular item be removed from the consent agenda and be considered and debated and voted upon separately. Are there any items any board member would like to remove from the consent agenda and consider as a separate item? If none, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second. And moved and seconded, are there any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. That completes the consent agenda. We have a three-hour executive session.[1763.01][1763.01](Laughter). No executive session tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn and go watch the Chiefs game?
Second.
Moving to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. We're adjourned. Go Chiefs.[1776.33][1776.33](Music)